Let's call this meeting to order. Russell, could you please call the roll?
Certainly. Councilmember McKay, Councilmember Freddie Fisickelli.
Here.
Councilmember Steve Brightcruts.
Here.
Vice Mayor Gary Jablonsky.
Here.
Mayor Jeff Nelson.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, tonight, we have the distinction and honor of having Troop 160 lead us in the pledge and presenting the colors. And if everybody would please stand.
Yeah.
What is it, Freddie?
Yeah, around the fire.
Hmm?
Yeah, there's a lot of people to be seen.
These are for tonight's meeting now, just so you know. I'm gonna start getting them ready. You can wait if you want.
Gary, I'll keep it tight to keep those shoes out, okay?
Which ones, the red ones? I think they should all put their shoes on.
Yeah. Come on, Marty, step in.
That's right.
Hey, Freddie, why don't you go around that side by Marty, by in front of Marty? Hey, Marty, take a half a step back and let Councilmember Fisickelli and Freddie, switch places, guys. There you go. Perfect. Can we move that chair in the way? All right, everybody look this way. Big smiles, look at me. Hey, this is a glamour shot. All right. Thanks, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Can I get one with my camera, Freddie?
Oh, wait a minute. One more.
You got it?
Yeah.
And he says, "I don't see much of him tonight." He didn't show up, we're trying to find him.
You're gonna get more than that for it, before I get through it. Thank you, scouts of Troop 160. Everybody, let's give them a round of applause, please.
But Vice Mayor, before we go to item three, which is the presentation, if there could be motions for the excusing of the absences.
Okay. I'll take a motion to excuse the mayor and Councilman McKay.
I'll make a motion to excuse Mayor Nelson and Councilman McKay.
Second? I can't.
Yeah, if Councilmember Fisickelli.
I made the motion to excuse.
Okay, I'll second it.
Okay. Very good. I'm gonna call the roll, call the vote.
Councilmember Fisickelli?
Here.
Councilmember Brightcruts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Okay, the motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, our next item on our agenda is the presentation for the National Arbor Day in December. I believe you have some information on that.
There's such a big crowd here tonight, I'm overwhelmed. But, you know, tomorrow is National Arbor Day, and in Southwest Ranches, we like Arbor Day so much, we celebrate it twice. We adopted our own Arbor Day in January, the third Friday in January, that is, the State of Florida and Southwest Ranches Arbor Day. National Arbor Day is celebrated on the last Friday of April every year by the United States, and it's a, it's a big thing throughout the world, and I'm really glad that we get a chance to celebrate it. And our Schools and Education Advisory Board has been proactive in the past years in getting the students to be aware of Arbor Day, and they do, Hawksbluff Elementary and other schools as well do, have had their students do artwork about trees, poems and drawings and such, photographs and everything. And this year, we had an amazing amount of artwork. I had 98 drawings from Hawksbluff Elementary, 98 students submitted. Unfortunately, I don't think they were organized enough to come tonight because they'd love to have their picture with council. If that opportunity can present itself again, I'll request that you would pose for a picture with the kids, and I'll give them their certificates. This is the certificate that we prepared for all the students this year, and it just says, "The 2014 National Arbor Day Art Exhibition in Southwest Ranches," and thank you all for recognizing this very important day.
Thank you, December.
Thank you, December. As always, you do a great job. Thank you very much. All right, moving on to public comment. Could you read the rules?
So far, we only have one speaker. Does anyone else wish to speak tonight? Seeing none, we'll waive the reading of the requirements. Barry Nunzic?
I'm gonna hold my comments. I'll come back at the next meeting. I'd rather have my comments on when the whole board's here. Thank you.
Okay. All right, next up on the agenda is the board reports. Do we have any members of the boards, town boards, wanna make any reports? It's gonna be a fast meeting, guys. All right. Councilmember comments, up next.
Want me to go first, Steve? You wanna go?
Slip a coin?
All right, I'll go. I really don't have, I really don't have much. I just, I just wanted to pick on our Vice Mayor just for a moment, to remind everybody that we've got the chili cook-off coming up, and, you know, I'm, I'm looking to see how that's gonna come out, taking on the Vice Mayor, you know, not to, not to make too big a deal about it, but the guy, you know, does know a little bit about restaurants and foods and all that thing, so we'll see how that comes out. But, no, seriously, I hope everybody comes out. It'll be a great event, supporting the Astronite Park Foundation, and it's great for our town, it's great for our community to all get together, and it'll be a lot of fun, so I just encourage you to come out and, and enjoy that. Thank you.
Okay, I don't, I don't have a lot myself, man. One of the things I wanna talk about is, finally, I don't know if y'all tried to get into the park lately. The park's locked up now, the fishing hole park, which I'm happy to see that it was done, but I'm very disappointed that it has to be locked up all the time. We don't let our, I think we need to let our people in there. I know I haven't had a chance to talk to you about it, December. I talked to Andy about it yesterday. I don't know if he mentioned it to you, but, you know, we worked like heck to get that park so they could use it, and then to close it down, I don't really see any reason whatsoever. They can still use the trail, but our acting town administrator, will you see if we can't make arrangements that if somebody don't wanna go open it, I'll go open it and close it? But I think it needs to be open. That was one of my uncomment.
Would you like the summer to come up to the mic? I think she may have.
You want to? I mean, you go, you wanna talk about it? There's nothing that she needs to say. Somebody just needs to tell her to go ahead and open it. Pardon? Yeah, well, can't, can't we open that main gate every morning?
December, why don't you come to the mic?
I mean, we, right now.
They're beginning construction out there, Freddie, this week. They dug a big hole, and there were some concerns about security and people being safe out there, although it's, you know, it has been open to the public for a while. Now that they're gonna start doing some construction out there, I'm awaiting direction. I'll, I'll take the direction of the council and the town administrator and the acting town administrator on what you guys wanna do. Since it is a construction site, though, I do have a few concerns about safety and...
Will you say, is it a safety issue?
Well, they dug, they dug a huge hole, and it had to be open overnight because it needed to be inspected by the Broward County Health Department.
You're talking about for the bathroom?
Right, right.
The way we're going, I don't know. He's supposed to been in there two weeks ago. He hasn't been in there.
No, he dug the hole on Monday.
He moved a little bit of dirt. I was there yesterday. He hasn't done anything, he hasn't moved any material or other than, it looks like he extended the pad a little bit, is all he's done. But are we intended to gonna keep it closed while the whole bathroom's gonna be constructed?
That is at your pleasure. I will take direction from you guys on that. I, you know, I feel safe to know that the construction site is secure, but that's just, you know, I mean, while the, while they're actually working on the restroom, of course, the site will be open, but that, that I need to defer to your judgment on. I'll definitely take your counsel on that.
Well, like I say, is, I don't know, Emily may know a little more. I know she said the guy was supposed to be in there. I was in there again yesterday, and all he's done is, right on the pad, it looks like he's extended a pad, but he hasn't moved any material. He hasn't got any, any of his equipment in there or nothing.
He reported to me on Tuesday morning that he had dug the hole. He was expecting the county inspector out on Tuesday afternoon and was called by the inspector to say that, that the inspector would be here this morning. The inspector may have been there, and the hole may have been covered up, because it was just look in the hole and then cover it back up again, but I'm not, you know, not 100% sure.
Well, I'm, I'm just one council person, but I, you know, we worked like heck to get the thing open, and now if we're gonna close it back up again, 'cause I know he needs safety on his equipment, and when he leaves at night, it needs to be locked up, and, and if we got a problem where there's some danger, I say, okay, close it. It's gonna be up to our, to council, I guess. I don't know, or our town administrator, but, but I just hate to see it not being open. That trail's there, those people are using that trail. I know every day I was up there, I always seen two or three horses come in there and ride that trail.
Well, you know what? I, I wasn't even locking the gate up until about a month ago, and then I did receive instruction that the gate needed to be locked. So the gate's been standing open or unlocked for many, many moons, and I don't have a problem leaving it that way. I was instructed to begin locking it, so I did that. I can change that in a heartbeat. It can...
Who gave you those instructions? 'Cause I talked to Andy yesterday, he didn't seem to feel it.
Actually, it was my understanding, Councilmember, that the direction came from you. I may have been mistaken, but we, we had it closed, we had it open. I, I'm not sure now where you wanna be, but wherever that is, that's where we'll be. Absolutely no problem.
Freddie, can I, can I join in just for a second? So, I mean, I, I think that, you know, from my perspective, I think we should, couple of thoughts. One is, I think it's something that we need to talk with Andy when Andy gets back. Personally, I think it would be good to get his perspective on it. My personal perspective is that I think that we should be prepared to cordon off the construction area of the, of the park, but not close the whole park down. That's, that's my thought. You know, that there is trails in there, there are other things that people can do. You know, normally, I think that's what we would be asking, is that to secure that, you know, not, not, you have to secure the whole park at night to keep people from coming and stealing things, but while people are there and working, you have to, you know, cordon off that area like you would a sidewalk that's under construction or something like that to keep people from getting hazard, but I don't think that it, generally, we would wanna close down the whole thing. But I would defer to Andy and yourself, kinda from the standpoint of looking at it from what's safe to the residents. We don't wanna create a, you know, something that's a hazard or, or a danger to our residents, but, but I would hope that there would be some middle ground there where we could close off part of it and still have the park open.
Well, that's, that's what I could say is, we worked hard to get it open, and we'll work it out. I talked to Andy about it yesterday, I just, you know, about it yesterday, and I really wasn't aware, I guess, you know, I get a call from the people bringing the fill, and they said, "The fill," and I said, "Take it up there," then he called me, he said, "The gate's locked." Well, then I went up there, unfortunately, I got a key. I opened it up for him, and we worked all that out, but then again, I was hoping we can work out something, that we can open it somehow if we have to, you know, we, they put up construction fences if we have to around where he's gonna be working or something, but it's just a shame that we got it and we can't use it, you know, 'cause he could be two or three months building that bathroom, you know, so it... Let me see if that's all I had. Thank you, December.
Public comment's over, but Noel, if you can contribute real quickly, please.
This is on this, the, I think the request came from the Parks Board, because Leslie Thiele had mentioned to the board that four-wheelers and ATVs were running the, the trail and through the brush.
They're not expecting any, they're not expecting...
That's in the park. And that it was after hours, and that something needed to be done. That's why the park, I believe, was, started to be locked, and that...
Well, we knew that, and we worked hard in December, worked hard to get that gate up, and we've got the gate up now, and it's, it's, it's not really, please, there isn't open if you wanna walk in there right now.
I believe the request came from the Parks Board originally.
Okay. Thank you, Noel.
That's all.
Okay, I've got a few things to go over before we go to the next thing. First off, the town birthday party is gonna be on June 12th, from 5:00 to 7:00 here at Town Hall. It's gonna go with a, the grand opening Town Hall, and you'll hear more about that as, in the month of May, so I just wanted to come out of the gate with that one. The other thing I, I would need to talk about, couple things. One is, as everybody knows, the Rolling Oaks Barn is under construction. I actually offered to help with the demo, and I was told to stay away. I don't know why. I can't, I can't, can't picture why, but, so, and I took their advice. I haven't gone over there. I'll wait, I'll wait and see how well they do. Usually, I can do it pretty quickly. But the other thing I wanna talk about is, we have a few golfers out here. In the game of golf, they have an event, it's called a pro-am, and what that is, is they take a professional and they pair him up with an amateur, and then they do certain things to make it a more equal battle out on the course. And one of the things they do is they give the amateur a handicap, and they, they give him strokes, and they usually take the professional, and they take strokes away from him, and that kinda levels the playing field, and where I'm going with this is, they do that to make it fair, and that's really, really important. And so, we've got an event this Saturday, so I wanna make sure that there's no bias, so I'm loaning Mr. Brightcruts, Councilman Brightcruts, his handicap, so that it's a fair match. You can go ahead and open it.
Should I open it then?
Absolutely. While he's opening it, because my wife wrapped it, which means it's probably got 14 layers of wrapping paper, just to let him know that what he's up against, no fear. My chili has over 18 ingredients, requires 96 hours to marinate. That means it's already made, and it's under lock and key.
It's already made. I'm going to Publix tonight and getting my ingredients.
So, just wanted to make mention, so...
The can opener, the official, the official Jablonsky can opener.
It's on loan. We're not allowed to give anything to each other, even though you're probably gonna deserve it.
It'll come back. It may have some beans and chili on it, but it'll come back to you.
So I just wanted to make sure that there was no unfair advantage given. I wanted to give you everything that, you know, to make it a fair, a fair match.
Wait, 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 wait.
And just, and yes, and, so we gotta have that. So we, hopefully, the whole town will come out. The Davie Police Department is going to be putting on a really good demo. I believe the K-9 units are gonna be there at about 2:00. If you have a particular time, you wanna come by, where they're gonna be doing that on the north lawn, for lack of a better way of saying, opposite the ring. There's gonna be a lot of activities there, and there's gonna be some really good chili, believe me. It's, it's gonna be a lot of fun. And alls I'm gonna do in, in saying closing, you know, Steve, when you buy a lottery ticket, the one thing they say to you as, as you walk out the door with the ticket, it's good luck. And I'll close with that.
You can't win unless you play. That's what I look at it.
One thing I, I wanna mention, too, I gotta go leave in the morning to take some cows to the west coast, but my wife says, "We're coming back early Saturday morning, 'cause we're going to the Killee Chaco," 'cause she, she usually does the testing. She'll let you know which one of them is the best one to do.
Great, glad to hear it. Glad to hear it. Mine, mine's already had 40 people proof it, so, no pressure. No pressure. All right, moving on, legal comments.
I did see the cans of Hormel in your car.
It's all in the, it's all in the smoke and mirrors.
Yeah. You know, just a quick legal update. I think we should end up with very good news in, in eight days from the, the budget. Hopefully, we'll be able to report some good things to the town, assuming that we get the governor's autograph, which is, take it to the next step, so hopefully, next meeting, we'll know more about that. Other than that, just, as far as Tallahassee is concerned, I'm looking at my notes real quickly. The septic tank legislation didn't impact the town this year. It was modified once again to not impact us, as well as there was a farm bill that never made it anywhere, so we were monitoring it, but that had no impact on anyone in the town either. Those were the main things that we were looking at and monitoring this year. Other than that, there's no more legal comments.
Great, thank you, Keith. We'll move on to administrative comments. Our town administrator is on holiday right now. He'll be back second week, first week, second week in May, first week in May, sorry. And Marty, our financial administrator, is standing in. You got, you got the baton, Marty, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. Good evening, everyone. I just have some generalized public service announcements. As Vice Mayor indicated, the town birthday party is the Thursday, June 12th, between 5:00 and 7:00 PM, and that's right before the June 12th council, regular council meeting. Make it very convenient for everyone, so we hope you plan to tour the facility and also stay for the council meeting. So that'll take place Thursday, June 12th. The second is, I did get a voice message from Mr. Ed Schwartz. I wanted everyone to know, the AARP is now holding safe driver classes in Town Hall. It's excellent program and session. He was thrilled. He wanted me to all remind you to come out, attend, because state law, and he actually faxed me the rule and regulation per 627.0652 that, that the office shall provide a reduction in your health insurance premium for any operator of a covered vehicle who is at least 60, 55, 55 years of age or older who has successfully completed a motor vehicle accident prevention course. So as you know, as, as finance, and I'm always into discounts, I wanna encourage everyone to, to come out and attend, because you don't have to be 55. What I want you to do is call your insurance company, because sometimes they'll give it to you if you're 25, or 35, or 45. Call in advance, come out. The price is $15 for members, AARP members, $20 for non-members. The good thing about it, it's good for three years, so you don't have to take the class repetitively. It's, it'll, you'll, discount, it would be valid for three years. So that's all I have, except for the fact that budgetarily wise, as legal mentioned, we're gonna be meeting with all the individual council members in accordance with the approved calendar is our next step, and everything's falling in line and on schedule. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Marty. Appreciate that. Moving on to number nine, we have a resolution. Russell, do you have that?
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, approving the 2013 amendments to the three interlocal agreements with Broward County, providing for the division and distribution of the proceeds of the local option gas tax, the Broward County 5th Cent Local Option Gas Tax, and the additional local option gas tax, authorizing the mayor, town administrator, and town attorney to execute set agreements and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Russell. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Second.
Very good. Any public comment? Seeing none? Russ, Russell, any comment on the council?
Yeah, so this is just, it's something that we do on a regular basis to officially accept those, those funds from the state, so it's kind of a perfunctory thing.
Thank you, Steve. Russell, would you like to go ahead and call the question?
Sure. Councilmember Fisickelli?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcruts?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Okay, item number 10, resolution, Keith, I think. Okay, all right.
A resolution of the Town Council of the Town of Southwest Ranches, Florida, ratifying the Town Council's decision to authorize its town attorney to file any and all lawsuits necessary against the City of Pembroke Pines relating to the City of Pembroke Pines breach of the interlocal agreement regarding local roadways and other matters, its breach of the agreement relating, relating to the delivery of emergency medical fire protection and fire prevention services, its improper approval of the Franklin Academy Charter School, and its refusal to, to participate in Chapter 164 Conflict Resolution Proceedings relating to the sighting of the Franklin Academy School, authorizing the town attorney and town administrator to take any and all steps necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution, providing for conflicts, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Thank you, Vice Mayor, and I'm sorry if this reso confused anyone, and I wanna explain how it got before you. We got a, one of the requests from Pembroke Pines in one of the cases recently, where they wanted all of the minutes and all of the documents and everything from the last five years in which the Town of Southwest Ranches mentioned the word Pembroke Pines, mentioned the word litigation, mentioned CCA, mentioned anything, because they looked at our charter, and there's a charter provision that says that the council has to authorize proceedings against Pembroke Pines. And although we found in the minutes many mentions and the council agreeing to proceed, there was no formal resolution on the books, so when we walked into court, I was faced with having to bring a slew of documents that Russell found, and I was gonna have to walk the judge through all the documents showing that the council actually knew that the litigation was occurring, because they were trying to make a claim that the council didn't know that the litigation was occurring against the City of Pembroke Pines. So rather than spending, you know, the next 10 hours going through all the documents and drafting a, a brief showing that the council had full knowledge of the, the cases against Pines, we said, "You know what? Let's just quickly draft a resolution that says that the council knows that the cases are going on, and then just present one document to the judge." To make it clear to everyone out there, this does not authorize any new litigation, this is only the existing litigation. There's nothing new that's allowed to be filed as a result of this. This is solely being utilized for one purpose, one purpose only, and that's to show that the council had knowledge of the cases that were filed against Pembroke Pines. So, you know, it was really just solely, again, just to codify it into one document, to save time and money, and just to show the judge one document. But if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Thank you, Keith.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Okay, public comment?
P.O. Box 291507, Davie, Florida. And I do reside in Southwest Ranches. I, I feel I'm at a loss, 'cause I wasn't privy to the interlocal agreement, but I remember that you were gonna have a, a conference in the council before we went into the lawsuit. I previously was against the lawsuit, because I felt it was a frivolous lawsuit, trying to implement something that the Pembroke Pines has jurisdiction over what they permit on their cities, just as we do. And I feel that at the last paragraph of the resolution, it says that you take any and all step necessary to effectuate the intent of this resolution. But I, I feel that the council, that you are relinquishing the oversight. You know, I, I gave you a, a letter that was printed with Davie Crockett, Congressman. It's not your money that you're spending, and it's the citizens' money. It's money that we spend, they're spending for a frivolous lawsuit, and if we lose, we have to pay their attorneys, too. And I felt that this money could be used for infrastructure and other necessary things within the town itself. And as far as the traffic that's being generated by the Franklin School, we should be going after the county. The county has, hasn't improved Griffin Road from Bonneville to Boulevard West, and that should be improved in order, in order to facilitate any traffic coming from US 27 or other apertures that are in, in that area. So I say again... So I say again, I think that you're, with this resolution, you're relinquishing the oversight of the council and it's your duty to see that we don't keep spending money after money and it, for me, it's a frivolous lawsuit. Thank you.
Thank you, Vince. Any other public comment? Yes, sir.
Mike Hanley, 50th Place, Southwest Ranches. I disagree vehemently with this resolution because you use the words "to file any and all lawsuits necessary." Without your oversight, without your knowledge, I don't want you giving a carte blanche to anybody. Maybe Mr. Polikov's the greatest attorney in the world, but nevertheless, if you look at some of the budget factors that we've had here in Southwest Ranches, in 211, we spent $472,000 plus on legal. 12, $590,149. 13, proposed budget of $385,000, and we've already gone to $515,000. City of Pembroke Pines has $135,005 allocated for legal advisor and a budget for legal services of $848. That's Pines. I feel like we're the mouse that roared. Why are we doing this and spending the council money? And then you turn around and you say, "We don't have the money to build 184. We don't have the money to expand Griffin Road." Where's all this money going to? And why are we allowing it to go out on frivolous, what I feel is a frivolous lawsuit, i.e. Mr. DiCipio? And the recommendations and suggestions for not paying him is a $1.25 lawsuit and dismissing it was that we've got to teach him a lesson. I don't think the only people that learned a lesson was this city council that you spent money unnecessarily. And I don't like the conclusion where the city manager and the city attorney make the decision to proceed without your oversight, without your okay on any and all lawsuits in regards to Pembroke Pines. I feel we should be building bridges, not making walls that are unscalable. Let's get in bed with Pembroke Pines in Weston and do something that would benefit all the communities instead of constantly being the thorn in their side, taking action, legal action, to stop them from making some progress. I don't want to be a rural community living in a cave. I'd like to get back and forth on some streets instead of having them all dammed up. In the last council meeting, Vice, Mr. McKay said that we have more through streets in Southwest Ranches than Weston. Well, Weston's border stops at I-75 and Weston Road. They have beautiful four-lane roads going through their city from, from Weston to Bonaventure Boulevard out to US 27. And he used the example that we have a Flamingo Road, Volunteer Road, I-75, Dykes, 72. Gentlemen, we don't count, you can't count that we have more through streets when the other city doesn't even exist in that length and that width of the, of the territory, so you shouldn't count. We have Dykes, Volunteer, I mean, 172 with speed bumps on it, one lane each direction, same as Dykes Road, and then bloody US 27. If you ever come out there after midnight and you can hear the roars of drag strips racing, going on on US 27, it's not a safe highway for anybody at any time. And I petition you do not give a blanket approval to anybody for any reason or taking away your authority and giving it away. You wouldn't even allow Andy to open the gates during a hurricane threat, and now you're giving the attorney and the town administrator blanket authority to file any and every lawsuit as they see fit? I say no way.
Thank you, Mike. Any other speakers? Yes, ma'am.
Tracy Swaye at 5110 Southwest. What do I live on? Which Rogers do I own? 201, there's, got on too many. Anyways, I understand what everybody's saying. We don't want to make, you know, enemies with our neighbors. We would like to have our residents within and outside being part of us. And we don't want to have to do losses if we do not have to, but sometimes we have to go legal. Sometimes we have to say, "You're not going to push on us." Because if we get pushed on, they will take over. Eventually, they could take over because if they get their hands on us, and I'm afraid that, you know, Polikov is exactly right, if something goes on, we could lose this town of Southwest Ranches. And don't think we're not small. We are small. We are large in land, but we are small in number compared to Pembroke Pines and Weston and Davie. And it takes sometimes to say, "Back off. We're not going to put up with something." It sometimes costs us money to say that, and I agree with Polikov in all honesty, and I understand my neighbors here. We don't want war if we can avoid war. That is something we don't want to do. I love the children, I love the communities, I love my neighbors next to me, but it's constant war. And sometimes you gotta say, "Enough." And this is where we legally protect us and still become and still remain as the town of Southwest Ranches. So I hope everybody takes that into account. Thank you.
Thank you, Tracy. Bob?
Bob Hartman, 5441 Southwest 198. I read and write contracts all the time, so I always just want to ask, what does this mean? Because I may have an interpretation and others may have a different. But when I read that you're ratifying the Town Council's decision to authorize the town attorney to file any and all lawsuits necessary against the City of Pembroke Pines relating to, and you can read on from there, doesn't that limit the scope of the attorney just to focus on the, I believe it's four different actions here and not just willy-nilly open lawsuits? And I'm not sure if he's ever opened lawsuits without your prior approval, so I'm not sure how there's a misinterpretation. Unless I'm misinterpreting this, I see this as having narrow scope on four items and it's a ratification that he can continue to proceed on these versus opening up a Pandora's box. I might be wrong.
Thank you. Any other speakers? Okay, public comment closed.
Vice Mayor, just to affirm what Bob Hartman just said, it was a ratification. It said that specifically. This is not new items. This was just ratifying the three that had already been filed, the three cases. One of them, we combined the two agreements. To correct the record, that was just completely wrong. There's no prevailing party attorney's fees. I don't know where someone got that from. None of these cases have prevailing party attorney's fees. To also correct the record on something that was just completely wrong, the town didn't sue Mr. DiCipio. Mr. DiCipio sued the town. We defended the case. That's all we did. We won. We defended the case when he sued us. We didn't sue him. Other than that, is, this is solely what it is. It's a reso to hand to a judge to show that the council is aware of the action as required by the charter.
Thank you, Keith. Any council members want to make any comments?
Yeah, thank you. I, I guess I just want to echo those comments. You know, unfortunately, we're, we're in a situation where we have to defend ourselves on multiple fronts. And if we're going to remain a town and if we're going to be able to live up to the oath that we took to defend our rural lifestyle, then we've got to defend ourselves. And I am all for building bridges as opposed to walls. I think that's a very valid point and, and I think that should be our goal and our focus, but at the end of the day, if somebody is looking to take advantage of it, we have to defend ourselves. And, and in virtually all those examples, not all of them, but in, in virtually all those examples that were brought up, those were all situations where people or organizations were suing us. We were not suing them and, and we were defending ourselves. And, and it would be nice if those things didn't occur and if we didn't have to defend ourselves, but the bottom line is that we do have to defend ourselves because if we don't defend ourselves, we're going to lose everything we've got here, everything that we all moved out here for, the lifestyle and the, you know, the, the unique nature of what we have out here. So I, I do think that there is a valid point there that if we can, if we can get beyond this and start building more of a, more bridges and more understanding, hopefully these, these types of situations will diminish, but for the, for the time being and where we are today, we have to defend ourselves. Thank you.
Go ahead. Freddie?
Yeah, Keith, I'll tell you that I was in Andy's office yesterday about this because I didn't quite understand it when I read it. You know, when you, when you read that line, ratifying the Town Council's decision to authorize the town attorney to file any and all lawsuits, it's, my hair stands on end. But I, after I talked to Keith over the phone and Andy, I'm putting my faith in my attorney, that's what we got him for, that it's only doing what he says it's going to do and, but I'm like everybody else, I'm pretty sure we want to get, get along with everybody and the only way a town this size can really survive is, is to, to do that. But in some things, I agree, we have to stand up for our rights and, and I'm, I'm willing to go along with it. Thank you.
Basically, this is a ratification of what we've already done and we're just making a resolution to show that we support all the legal actions that have taken at this point. Russell, go ahead and call the question.
Sure.
No other comments.
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcrude?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, moving on. Next, appointments, Broward League of Cities. Russell, do you have the existing appointments? Can you comment on that?
I make a motion that we.
Freddie?
What do we have to do?
Go ahead, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, go ahead.
I say I'd like to make a motion that we reinstate all three members that are on the board now.
I think it's a great idea. I'll second that.
Okay, I'm on that list. Saw that one coming. Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any public comment? This is not a resolution, this is just an appointment. If anybody would like to comment. As, in keeping with tradition of the mayor, we always break Robert's rules, so I get, I get to say that coming out of the gate.
Well, Doug wasn't here, but I know he'd agree.
Yes, I, he's the lead, I'm second. So, very good. Does this require a vote? No, so we'll just leave it?
Just make a motion.
Okay. Go ahead, call, call the question.
Okay, so, Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcrude?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Reluctantly, yes.
Okay.
Okay. Approval of the minutes. So, move to the council meeting. We have a motion, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. Any public comment on the minutes? Seeing none, comments closed. Call the question. Any comments, council comments?
Councilmember Fissa Kelly?
Yes.
Councilmember Brightcrude?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Jablonsky?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Okay, I'll make, I think we're going to set a record tonight. I'll make a motion for adjournment. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Forty-